Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Ridgecrest City Council. I'd like to welcome you to the holiday season and open our meeting with roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
Present.
Mr. Hayman.
Present.
Ms. Breeden.
Present.
Five eyes, motion carries.
Okay. Our first item is our approval of our agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda as presented? Hearing done, I'll call for a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second.
We will be doing roll call all evening. The voting system is down.
Thank you, ma'am. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Ms. Breeden.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, we can go ahead and begin with our pledge of allegiance. I'm going to take this thing off. Our pledge deserves more. Chief.
Please go ahead and be ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Councilor Roger Rotnum.
Please join me in prayer if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Thank you for the opportunity you have given to us to serve this country, to serve our city, Lord. Lord, I pray for our country. Give the leadership of our country your wisdom to lead the country in the right path, Lord. Pray for our troops who are in harm's way, protect them from all evil. Lord, pray for all the employees of city and the ones who have served the longest, and thank you for all their service to the community they have provided, Lord. I pray for our community and the country as we enter into the season of Christmas, Lord. Give us your love and give us the spirit of giving and sharing and caring, Lord. Lord, provide us with all, for all the people who do not have the home, shelter, clothes, and food, which others are enjoying, Lord. Lord, I pray for all the people who are sick and protect them and heal them, Lord. Bless each one of us here as we deliberate many issues which are relevant to this community, Lord. Give us your wisdom so that we can take the right decisions for this community, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. So our first thing on the agenda this evening is presentations of our employee service awards. I'm going to ask the council to join me at the podium, and we will go ahead and present those awards. It is so quiet, and this evening, we have several employees to recognize this evening, but most, none of them are here. They're all hopefully resting after a long day's work, but they've continued to give to our community. I'm going to go ahead and recognize each of them based on their years of service, and then we'll go ahead and recognize them, and then we have one final presentation. So the first presentation is to Mike Ogas, Ogas? I always pronounce, I butcher Mike, but he's been with our department for five years, and I think in that time he's probably saved at least two lives per year. The man is a great servant to our public, and thank him for his service. Alania Neal with five years of service. If I butcher a name, I apologize in advance, but you guys can help me in the future. And then two members of our staff with 15 years of service, Sandra Montoya and Roger Ziesler. Thank you both for your years of service. And we have one who is 20 years of service, and she is one of the quiet ones that doesn't want to be out there. Huh? He? Oh, he. Sorry. What? Oh, it's back, oh, it's Jamie. Oh, it's Jamie, that's right. Sorry. I mixed them up. Jamie, I'm sorry. I did not mean to misgender you. Jamie is one of the quiet ones that has worked for a long, long time in making sure that our wastewater system is always kept up and make sure that we don't end up in a pile of, oh, wait, wrong word. So Jamie Gross, 20 years of service to our community and to our city. Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate it, and if you can keep things from getting backed up, we will certainly appreciate another many years of your service. With that, I'm going to excuse myself from the podium and ask Councilmember Peggy Breeden to come forward.
I do.
Thank you.
I have everything you asked for.
Thank you. Les, would you come up, please? And Susan, would you come up too, since you are part of what makes him so special? And so I'm asking both of you to come up. You are a pain in, you are a pain in the neck. She's wonderful. I want to, I asked to do this, come up here so we can get a good picture of you. I asked to do this because Les and I have been friends for over 40 years, and I first met him when I came into town, and I met him at the Country Feed Barn. And when he left there to come to the city, I thought, wow, we stole one of the best away. So I want to recognize Les for all his work for 40 years, and Susan for putting up with him for much longer than that and helping him be.
Forty-one years.
Forty-one years. Forty-one years. For being an amazing employee, somebody who cares and does and is always there no matter what. You know that Les is going to take care of everything, and I am so very proud. I beg to do this, to present this to you. So my thanks.
Thank you very much, Peggy.
Thank you. You made my day. Did you want to say anything?
Congratulations. I can honestly say it, Peggy's the only mayor for the November 11th. Oh. It's the second one. Okay. I don't ever want to be the, I don't mind being second, but.
Did you want to say anything?
Well, just I've worked with a lot of good people in 35 years. I've also worked with a couple I won't mention. But in the whole, it has been a good, a good day.
Thank you. Thank you for your service to all of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Les, can we do one picture up front? Yep. One picture up front if we could, please. I was trying to come up with the joke about what was, what was in the movie theaters
I come out of the way. I don't want to be in the background.
in 1987 when you started here, but I couldn't come up with something fast enough, so. Back to the Future is 85, so. I tried, I was going to use Back to the Future, but I couldn't come up with something off the top of my head, but.
I said to Thomas, I meant it just seems like yesterday.
That's funny. I like that. Thank you again, and thank you to all of our staff members for their many years of service. One of the incredible things this city has is its staff, and I can tell you, it's a huge relief to this council that we know we can start to correct some of the things that we have neglected for the last couple of years, and we'll be able to fix that in the coming fiscal year. So thank you for, again, for all your years of service. Next is public comment section. Public comment of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comment, but may provide direction to staff to collect information pursuant to the Brown Act. The city council may not act on item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and the total public comment section time of the agenda is limited to one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Is there any public comment from the floor? To speak?
Can you speak about what the problem is?
Yeah, any issue, just please come on up to the podium. And if you'd just state your, your name and address, please, ma'am.
Eva Bell for PO Box 1443, Inyo, Kern.
Thank you.
And maybe this is a good night to come. Street people are here. I was on Richmond Road and not real happy. I called a number they gave me. They said it was the city clerks, left a message, and never got anything back, trying to find out where I could put in a claim, but blew out a tire and bent my rim. Stranded in the dark, 5:30 it gets dark. There is no line from the fairgrounds to Bowman Road in the middle of the pavement. It ends just past the fairground, the double line in the middle of the road, so nobody can see on what side you're on. Looked like, you can't see another car. Am I too close? Are they too close? Went to go over just a little bit on the pavement and ran onto the dirt and ran into the largest pit hole I've ever seen. I've got pictures if you'd like to see. And blew out my tire and bent my rim. I'd like to know where I put in a claim.
All we'll do is we'll have, go in the city manager.
Yeah, ma'am, if you don't mind, I can have my public works director meet you out in the lobby. He can give you the location where you can file that claim. That's actually outside the city of Ridgecrest, within County of Kern.
The fairgrounds?
Yes, that road is the county, so we can, we can get you the information that you need to file that claim.
And you have to put in gravel where that great big hole is, then all of a sudden, not even, not even 100 yards there, it starts pavement for the whole thing. I got pictures of that, too. I don't understand why that's left. That road is used, I don't know how many people out the back gate that go to Walmart or where they live off of Upjohn. That street is used a lot. And is that, is that where the city ends? Is where the double line ends?
Yes.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I can have Mr. Reed get your information so we can get that information to the county, then get you the information that you can file your claim.
That would be great. I got all the receipts for the rim and the tire.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I don't see any from the floor. Is there any public comment on the phones? Okay, don't see any. We'll go ahead and bring it back, and we'll begin with our council announcements or direction. Thank you for that, and Travis is speaking with her. Council announcements or directions, we'll go ahead and start with Kyle. You get to be the first one.
Nothing.
Nothing?
None.
Nothing?
None here.
No? Okay, well, then I'll just talk for everyone. Peggy, I see that somebody brought you some beautiful flowers. Those are great. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the couple of announcements because, as you guys would know, this will be Councilman Breeden's last meeting before we do the transition on our next meeting, which will be on December the 21st. We'll be swearing in our new council members, and I want to make, take a moment and just say something about the election. I want to first and foremost thank Tom Wicknick, Chris Ellis, Scott Miller, and Jennifer Wood Slaton, J.D. Zip, anybody who was willing to stand for public office. Thank you for your willingness to serve your community. Thank you for your desire to be part of, of the solutions that we're creating, and I look forward to continuing to see you getting involved. We have the, the passage of Measure P appears to be, while I'm not going to use the term official because it has not been officially released, I think they're due to release it officially tomorrow. Is that correct, Rika?
Yeah.
So, so we'll go officially tomorrow, but thank, I wanted to take a moment and thank the citizens again for their support of Measure P. It's up to us now to deliver on the promises. And then finally, of course, I wanted to congratulate my colleague to the right, Mr. Hayman, on his reelection. I look forward to continuing to work with you. And my colleague out in the audience, Mr. Gorman, I look forward to working with you. We've got a lot of great things going for this community, and this election was certainly a interesting one and certainly helps to guide the direction of this council moving forward, and we look forward to serving you moving forward. And then lastly, let me just take a moment and shout out to the entire Parks and Rec staff and our coordinator, Nerissa Wagner, on a fantastic tree lighting. It was fun. It was exciting. It was the second year in a row that we had kids out playing and, and being kids and bringing that sense of community, and that means that we can only go up from there doing more, and I think we'll have an equally great tree lighting in '23, if not better, and look forward to that. And if you haven't seen it, jump on Facebook, jump on, on one of our social media channels. There's a live video of the tree lighting, and it looks beautiful because it goes around the tree rather than up and down it. So the up and down controversy is over. So, thank you again, Nerissa, and your entire team. We'll go ahead and move forward with our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion. If no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions, if comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered a enlisted, enlisted sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public or, or council to address the item before action is taken. I will now read the two consent items. Item number one is the proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council meeting regular meeting dated November 16, 2022. The second one is to review and approve the recognized obligation payment schedule ARPS for 2023-24 and administrative budget for fiscal year 2324 of the successor agency of the Ridgecrest Redevelopment Agency and approval of resolution. Does any member of the council wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and call for a motion for approval of the consent calendar as presented.
So moved. Sorry.
I got a first and a second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Ms. Breeden.
Aye.
Five ayes. Motion carries.
Okay. We have a bunch of consent items on the day, on the table today. I am going to, one of the, each of these requires the time of Mr. Reed, who I know is still occupied taking care of the citizen outside. And the first item up is discussion item number three, and this is a resolution to accept the bid base as submitted for one of the, oh, this is the big one. This is the 1.3. This is for Franklin Avenue Street Improvement Project. Mr. Reed.
Mr. Mayor, we could maybe do.
You want me to go to item number seven?
Item number seven.
Okay, we're going to go and move on to item number seven. We'll come back to item number three. Item number seven is discussion regarding the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. Mr. Hayman.
Yes, I don't have anything to report tonight. We will be meeting next week, and then I'll follow up on our next meeting with a report.
Okay. Is there anybody who has any questions for Mr. Hayman in regards to groundwater authority?
No, other than to admit my own delinquents. I didn't watch the PAC meeting was at last night. I've met four. Did you happen to catch that? I just.
No, I was in a quality of life meeting, but.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I think the primary focus was a, on the three, Preville, some Pritchard, three different pipeline directions that they're going. And so that's what I hope to be able to report back on, on our next meeting. So basically, there's three, three directions they can go. If you look at Cow City on a map, there's a route that goes from Cow City, crossed the highway and goes up around Red Rock Canyon. There's another route that goes from Cow City through, those that are familiar with it, say Garlock Road region, and comes out over on to 395 and then into the, into the city. And then the third one is from Cow City, which I believe it's down 29, or is it, is it 29 Mule Team Road out of Cow City?
20 Mule Team.
20 Mule Team? Yeah, 20 Mule Team Road. And that one would come out and then follow along the highway down through Red Rock, or not Red Rock Canyon, but Ransburg and, and Red Mountain and on into the city. So, but yeah, that's, it was being presented to the PAC and TAC.
Yeah, I read through the packet. I just didn't get a chance to watch the meeting, so.
Yeah, and it was just, it was all Zoom, and so.
Nothing further.
Okay. Anything else? Any member of the public have any questions in regards to the groundwater authority? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and move on to, we're going to go and move back to item number three. Welcome back, Mr. Reed. We're going to go ahead and move forward with item number three. This is the Franklin Avenue Street Improvement Project. And the first of, just want to highlight before we begin all of these, if I'm correct, Mr. Reed, the total we're looking at here is, is over $12 million of roadwork, correct?
Somewhere really close to that. I don't, I don't know exactly what the total is. I didn't add it up.
No, we don't have to be to the exact, but this is, this is big, guys. This is a lot, a lot of roads, so.
So with everything we've got going on, with all the stuff we're awarding tonight, I've made a presentation as far as paving goes and as far as our sewer improvements go, that I thought I would start with, just to kind of give everybody the background. So first, we'll do our paving presentation. So we've got four projects that we're looking to award. One, you guys already awarded, which is the Ward Street Phase One. The second one tonight will be your FY22 Measure V paving. We've got some of the major highlights of what we're doing. We all know that ADA issues are going to be coming up, and in this project, we're replacing 69 curb ramps. So 69 ramps will be made ADA compliant. The total projected cost for the project is 5.2 million.
Is it 522 or 23?
I just said 5.2. I just rounded 5.23.
No, no, no. Financially, 22 or 23?
Fiscal year.
Well, the project was started in fiscal year 22, so that's where we got the date from, but it's going to run '23, and it might span a little bit into '24. But when we first initiated, the project was in '22, so that's where the date came from. Same thing with our next one with our chip seal project. Our chip seal project is resurfacing about 1.6 million square feet of road. We've got over 10,000 millimeter crack resurfacing for a total projected cost of about 1.2 million. The next one, the one that we were just talking about, we've got our Franklin Avenue Improvement Project. This one's duly funded. We used every dollar that we've got in our substandard street fund. Of that, there's about 840,500 and Measure V is putting up the other 50%, which is 838,000-ish. So that's another half mile of road that we're basically fully reconstructing. So Franklin was a substandard street, so the best way I can describe that to you is it's desert mix on dirt with no curb and gutter, no anything like that. So this is a full street improvement project. We're talking about drainage infrastructure, asphalt, base, a full road section. And the last one, one that you guys already awarded, is our West Ward Phase One Project, which was 1.4 million, of which about 618 of that comes from Measure V, and 774,000 was funded by the RSTP grant, which we received. Here's the map that gives you an idea of what our FY22 Measure V paving project looks like. All the streets in red are, are mill and fill style paving, so that's where we'll grind off three inches and put back three inches asphalt. The yellow streets were ones we added. We were supposedly, we were going to slurry those, but when Les and his team got in there to start milling it to make it look, to get, get it, the surface prepped for slurry, it was coming up in chunks, and basically we found that there was only about an inch, inch of asphalt left there, and slurry was not the right technique, so we added that to this project. The blue are the streets that we are chip sealing. So, and as you can see, there's quite a bit of roads in here that we're doing, so it's a pretty extensive project. The next one, this is our Franklin Avenue Project. This gives you an idea of what we're doing. It spans between Mahan and Downs. It's a full repaving of that. You've got quite a few curb ramps we're doing, and in the process of doing this, you see all the yellow segments. That's all the curb and gutter we're putting in, so that way we can make sure we've got adequate drainage facilities, so we don't have the issues we've been having on that road. What prompted us to do this was every time it rains, we see significant runoff that comes from the county areas, and the original design of this area, it's supposed to run down Mahan to the Bowman Channel. But because we don't have the infrastructure in on the top of Franklin, all that water turns and heads down Franklin, makes it to Downs, makes a mess in Downs, and proceeds to plug all the storm drains we have on Downs, and then creates a ton of work for Les and his crew to go clean up the mess, clean out the storm drains, things like that. So again, there's another, gosh, I forget how many, like 18 or 20 curb ramps that we're replacing on this one as well, that will be ADA compliant. 29, there you go, thank you. So there was quite a few. And this is our Ward Street Improvement Project, and the one you guys already awarded. 50% of this comes from Measure V, 50% is from the RSTP grant funding. This has sewer, a sewer portion that will get done prior to the paving. Everlevel's already been out on site. They've done some recon with the sewer system. We're working with their engineers for the bypass system right now. The overall project will run from China Lake Boulevard all the way to Downs. Phase One includes all the sewer work, so we're doing all the remediation work on the sewer under one contract, so that way we're ready for Phase Two next fiscal year. And then we'll be paving Phase One, which runs from Norma to China Lake Boulevard. I did this just because I wanted you guys to see how, how many streets we're actually doing work on.
The one thing I was going to ask for, I was looking for.
And there's, it's, I would run through each and every one of them right now, but I have them all, and I have some pictures showing that I'll, I'll give you guys the benefit of. So there's, there's quite a few streets. If I, I did do a count, and I forgot to bring my piece of paper, but I think it's like 38 streets that we're working on, so. So here's the first one. This is the Franklin Avenue and one on China Lake Boulevard. So if you look at the first two pictures, you can see how there's no shoulders, there's no curbs, and you can tell that the water in that middle picture runs right down the side of the road. That's the mess that makes it down to Downs. And as you can see with the big ditch that's on the side, all the dirt that relocates ends up in Downs. So that'll be the problem that we're getting rid of on Franklin. China Lake Boulevard is one of our major arterials. We're chip sealing that street, that'll, the county chip sealed the portion just to the south of that. It came out really, really nice, so we're hoping to duplicate that and do that from Springer all the way to the new paving down by the old Walmart building. Here's another picture of Franklin. This is Franklin off of College Heights Boulevard. So that's the Neo-Christman track. We're going to go in and we're going to chip seal that, and we're also going to chip seal Caladacasa, which is the east-west or the north-south street that crosses Franklin. The next one's Mahan. Mahan, that's another street we're chip sealing. As you can see, it's got some significant ravelling where all the fines are coming out of it, so we're trying to make it smooth again and make it drivable and add another seven to 10 years of life to it. Then you've got China Lake Boulevard again, College Heights Boulevard. We're doing all of College Heights from Kendall to China Lake. Mahan Street again, Lark Spur. These are all chip sealed streets. Like I said, I just kind of wanted to give you guys some pictures to show you the, this, what the road looks like now. So once we do this work, I can come back and show you all the pretty pictures of what it looks like when we were done. Lilac, Locust. This is that eastern portion award. I think Eric probably knows this street pretty well. It's in great shape, probably doesn't really need anything, right?
It was not driven previously.
So that's another one that we're going to do some significant work to. Drummond, Drummond's a special street. We've got a lot of new paving out on Drummond, so we're basically chip sealing the areas that are not new paving. So we're chip sealing all the area in front of Sage Mart where there's not new paving, and then we're chip sealing the northern half to Inyo, and then we're going to chip seal, if you see the picture in the middle there, that is the westbound or eastbound traffic, I'm sorry, from Mahan to Inyo. We're going to chip seal Scott Street, the entirety from Drummond to Sidnor. The next one's Mahan. Mahan, that's another street we're chip sealing. As you can see, it's got some significant ravelling where all the fines are coming out of it, so we're trying to make it smooth again and make it drivable and add another seven to 10 years of life to it. Then you've got China Lake Boulevard again, College Heights Boulevard. We're doing all of College Heights from Kendall to China Lake. Mahan Street again, Lark Spur. These are all chip sealed streets. Like I said, I just kind of wanted to give you guys some pictures to show you the, this, what the road looks like now. So once we do this work, I can come back and show you all the pretty pictures of what it looks like when we were done. Lilac, Locust. This is that eastern portion award. I think Eric probably knows this street pretty well. It's in great shape, probably doesn't really need anything, right?
It was not driven previously.
So that's another one that we're going to do some significant work to. Drummond, Drummond's a special street. We've got a lot of new paving out on Drummond, so we're basically chip sealing the areas that are not new paving. So we're chip sealing all the area in front of Sage Mart where there's not new paving, and then we're chip sealing the northern half to Inyo, and then we're going to chip seal, if you see the picture in the middle there, that is the westbound or eastbound traffic, I'm sorry, from Mahan to Inyo. We're going to chip seal Scott Street, the entirety from Drummond to Sidnor. We're doing Sidnor from Scott to Randall, doing Randall in its entirety in that block, so it goes from the cul-de-sac to Herschel. We're doing Herschel to Scott, so that's a, Herschel turns into Randall and whatnot. We're doing Kennet from Sierra View to Downs. It gives you an idea of kind of what it looks like. There's some pretty rough spots on that road that we can't wait to cover up. We're doing Purdue from Wayne to Norma. We're also doing some other work on Purdue for Measure V paving project, which is actually repaving Purdue from Sierra View to the end of the cul-de-sac. So, and then these are pictures of Ward. This is a project you guys already awarded. That one with the shadows did not come out very well. I apologize for that. This gives you a better idea. So we've got a lot of longitudinal cracking and block cracking on that and all stuff that we're going to remediate. Now for some of the fun ones. Atkins Street. Atkins Street, since the day I got here, has kind of been one of the bane's of my existence for complaints that we get. We're happy to say we're putting in full improvements along this road. So we've got a lot of buildings that were here before the city was incorporated, so we've got places where we don't have curb gutter and sidewalk and drive approaches, and we don't have a full width street. Well, we're going to have a full width street there now. We're putting in curb gutter, sidewalk, and, and we're completely repaving the road. There's Purdue, the one I was talking to you about, as you can see all the cones and plates up on that one. The Water District has been working diligently with us to get all their services replaced under all the streets that we are paving. I spoke with their maintenance foreman just yesterday. He asked us if we could try to coordinate where that we would do our Mesquite Area Paving, Mesquite, Palaverde, that yellow section that was on that map, if we would do it as the last portion of their project to make sure they have enough time to finish getting all their services changed. And I said I don't think that'll be a problem. I think the contractor that was the basement on that has always worked well with us and has always been open and accommodating to what we've requested, so I don't think that'll be an issue. Reeve Street, we're doing extensive work on Reeve Street. We're going from basically the western property line of Old Albertson's, which is where an R, not an RSPAC, C-MAT grant funded paving it.
Can I just jump back to Purdue real quick?
Yeah.
You're doing Purdue east or west from Sierra View?
So Purdue is going to go to the cul-de-sac, so that would be east. That's where all the apartments are.
Yeah.
And then the other section of Purdue we're doing is from Norma to Wayne, which is chip seal, which is, finishes out what we did on Purdue with our FY21 paving project.
From Norma to Wayne. Okay, so that's the other side.
So here, let me.
No, that's perfect. But we're doing the other side of Purdue, the other DMV side of Purdue.
So if you, if you look at the.
It's too small for us to see up there.
Oh, okay.
It would be, that's why, I apologize. I'm on Google Maps at the same time. I'm trying to, I'm trying to visualize where you're talking about at the same time. But, but Purdue has, Purdue can go west from Sierra View to.
Downs.
To Downs.
Downs, but we, we don't have anything planned for that.
We're not doing that section. We're doing the east section.
Although that section does need it. That whole section over there needs one.
Right, right, right. But, but this is completing the east section.
Correct. We're completing the east section, and then we're doing the first of that, let's call it the west section, which is the cul-de-sac that goes up to the backside of DMV.
Perfect. Thank you.
So Reeve Street again, like I said, we have tons of work. We're going from the western property line of the Old Albertson's all the way to China Lake Boulevard, and this is a full street improvement. This is, so if you look at the third picture up there, you'll see where the sections of sidewalk curb and gutter are missing. Again, these are structures that were built before the city was incorporated. We're putting in the sidewalk curb and gutter there. We've re-profiled the whole street, so it doesn't have the huge dips for the cross gutters to drive through it. Wayne Street, this ties into Purdue, so if you look back at that picture, I'm standing in the intersection of Wayne and Reeves for that, the third picture on the right, and then that's looking at Wayne Street. Les and his team did a beautiful job of making Wayne what wasn't drivable, drivable, but we're going to come and finish and put curb gutter and do a pave out on that, so that way it's a full width street. And then the middle picture there, that's Reeves looking towards China Lake Boulevard. As you can see, the whole south side of the street does not have curb and gutter, and that will have curb and gutter and sidewalk here after we get done with this. The next street we're doing is Graff. Graff is from China Lake Boulevard to Wayne. That's in front of Emmanuel Christian School. There's a, a lot of trench repairs, a lot of potholes, patches, things like that. So this is one of the other, probably one of the worst streets in town. That, Atkins, Reeves, those are about the three worst streets I could think of in town, and we're going to remediate those. So the other, now we're getting into that section that I was talking to you about where Les went in to resurface and we were going to slurry, and we found that that probably wasn't the best method, so we added Palaverde, Mesquite, Sage, Wayne, and the ending cul-de-sac of Mesquite. As you can see, especially in that Mesquite picture, you can see where it's just, chunks are coming out. It's because it's only like an inch and a half thick. There's no structural section remaining. And then, then we're doing all of Peg from Felspar to where it ends on Vera. That's got some re-profiling in it as well to make intersections more drivable. You see that cross gutter on Vera? It's one of the steeper cross gutters we have in the valley, so we've re-profiled Vera, widened the cross gutter, and flattened the cross gutter out, so it's actually drivable, so you don't have to slow down to a near stop to drive through it. Sierra Vista is at the end of Vera. We're doing Sierra Vista from the edge of the asphalt all the way through to Argus. We're doing Alverde from Argus to Ridgecrest Boulevard, and we're doing Warner from Ridgecrest Boulevard to Church. Wild Rose from, is it Wild Rose? I think Wild Rose we're doing from Allen to Sierra View, and then Coral and Wasp we're doing from Allen all the way to Downs. So, pretty comprehensive project, lots of work to be done, lots of money we're going to be spending. So this is just to give you kind of an idea of the balancing act we had to do. So there were two other streets that we had designed for. We wanted to make sure that, I, I gave you guys a promise, I'd been saying this in our, our Measure V committee reports forever, that after this year, there was not going to be any more reserve for projects. Well, we're going to hold true to that after we do this. So we made sure we had enough streets and enough things on that we would allocate all the funding that we had for Measure V, to the point I had to cut two streets out of our Measure V project to make sure we had ample money to do the projects. So our FY22 Measure V project, we budgeted 3.75 million. After I gone through and added a bunch of streets and done all of our magic to try to get as much as we could done, that project came back in at 5.3 was the original bid, of which our reserves, we talked to Cherie, she had, we had about 2.3 million in reserves. We wanted to make sure we still had a decent chunk in reserve when we were done, just in case we, we all know how construction projects go. We tried to do our ample research to figure out what was going on, and we don't have a ton of change orders, but within everything, we always know how that goes out here. I feel like as soon as you put a bucket in the ground, you find something unknown. So we did the balancing act, and we made sure that we would have a little bit of a, a reserve there in case something did come up, but when we get done with this, we literally have about $400,000 in our reserves. So it will all be gone.
Just to carryover for the public, the term reserves is not what we would call like the reserves of the city or something to that effect. This is the amount of money that has been allocated to, from Measure V to the roads projects. That's the reserve you're speaking of.
Yeah, it's, we, we call it a reserve because it's, it was unbudgeted at the time of our budget, but with what we're doing now, it's all with your approval of these contracts, it will now all be budgeted.
Yeah. This means we're going to spend the money that the taxpayers have given us for roads.
Correct.
That we have had some, I mean, COVID, COVID was a substantial fork in the road.
Yes.
Did you use that as a term?
And that's, and that's ultimately, like you said, what it is, is we've gotten these valuable tax dollars for road repair, and we need to get that spent, so the public gets the benefit of the new roads and things like that that they drive on, and that's what we're trying to do. And that's why we put together projects that we thought would be real close to that, and obviously with inflation, we had to cut a little bit out of it, but hey, we're going to get as much as we can done, done now. So, so like I said, as I promised, we're spending all of the carryover that we had from previous years. And lastly, I just want to say, none of this would be possible. Measure V covers 95% of our roads budget, and just want to say thank you to the citizens for trusting us and the city staff and council to get all this done, so.
Travis, if you would. Thank, sorry, am I speaking?
Go for it.
Okay. I just had something on my mind, and I want to get out before I forgot it. Thanks for the presentation. That was good, and I think it's what the community needed to see. How, I have explained this to the public in the past, but I think it's always better coming from you, and it's better that we reiterate it. How are you picking winners and losers? Anybody watching this meeting right now looked at that list and they said, hey, my road's not on that list. My road's just as bad as the pictures you showed. How are you choosing?
So the, the winners and losers were picked by a comprehensive grading system that we had, that we did to set up our five-year plan. It utilizes traffic volumes, whether it's a collector, an arterial, things like that. And ultimately, we've taken a lot of flack online, too, for people saying, why are you always doing works on Drummond and the Downs and these, and why are you not working on private streets? Well, the fact of the matter is, is the Drummonds and the Downs, the Normas, those are arterials. Those are streets that everybody drives on. So that's streets that I drive on daily. That's streets that probably most of you drive on daily, because that's how we get from one end of town to another end of town. So yeah, we're, we're going to prioritize those streets because more of the public gets a benefit from those streets being nice. Whereas, as we start getting into, and I'm not saying they're less important, but as we start getting into these local roads, the only people that get the benefit of that are the people that live on that local road. So that, the traffic volumes, if it's a collector, how we categorize them, that plays a huge role into how we prioritize when things get done. Now, our five-year plan had a comprehensive study done where we ran around, looked at all the streets and graded them. Each road was given its own grading, and then we took that grading and we prioritized how we were going to spend the money for five years to repair streets, and when, when, what method we were going to do to do it. Now, after we have completed these projects, we will have substantially completed the five-year plan, other than the roads that Les still has to slurry. So we have done the projects for 23 paving, we'll have done the projects for 25, I'm sorry, for 22 paving and for 24 paving. So the only thing that's going to be left, and we'll also have done the projects for chip sealing for 22 and 24. So the only thing that's going to be left is Les's area of roads to slurry. So with that, one of my major tasks that I'm going to work on next year is I'm going to be updating that five-year plan. So earlier this year, you guys approved us to go out and LiDAR all the streets, so we could get comprehensive crack mapping and things like that. So now we're going to have a way to quantify, okay, it's not just going to be a visual. We're going to take any bias out of that, what was done, because it's not going to be myself or two other people going around looking at it and saying, well, is this street worse than this street? When do we classify it? Now we're going to have actual quantifiable data that we can run through the software for our Road Saver System that we have, that can tell us where this street is because of the amount of cracking, the depth of the cracking, the deterioration from when it was first installed, we feel that this is a street that needs to get prioritized now. So we're going to have a computerized system as well as ourselves going out and looking at them and saying what's going on to be able to allocate money towards streets. So that's a comprehensive process, and I'm sure that's not really explaining to the public too much, but that's, that's how it's done.
No, that is good. That's exactly what the public needed to hear. I've, for me on infrastructure, I've explained that a few times. It's a, it's a software program. There's, there's input, so that you and your guys who know this town better than anybody else, and gals, I'm sorry, you know, they've, they've driven around, they've input that data, and it wasn't like it was just, you, you hit the squeakiest wheel in the town and you, you threw, you know, you went around and haphazardly threw names up on a list. You spent some time. I look forward to seeing that LiDAR data. That was actually going to be a question of mine, and how that worked into your process, so that'll be nice when that comes out. Thanks, Travis. I appreciate that.
I just want to go ahead and make sure the council's okay. So what my intention here is, all four of these items are, Mr. Reed, all four of these items are all related to this. Our next four items are all related to this topic. So what I'd like to do is spend the time discussing item number three as a council. You're discussing anything related to the measuring projects, and then we'll go through each of them individually very quickly at the end of there, knocking them down if there's any questions.
So one of them is not a roads project. One of them is a sewer project.
Okay, and it's not part of it. That's, that's item number six.
Are we going to do the sewer presentation now and then go down all of them, or do we want to do the?
No, no, we'll just do the, item number six is a sewer, correct?
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's fine, absolutely.
Item number six is the sewer, correct, Mr. Reed?
Item number, I honestly, I just have the staff reports. I, what are the one that says Phase Two?
Yeah, item number six is the sewer. So, so I just want to make sure that we're discussing items number three, four, and five. I'll be happy to take any questions, and that way we can streamline through the remaining items as necessary, since you did put a, a presentation together, and thank you, sir. Is there any other initial council comments? I'll go, actually, since Kyle went first, we'll go Solomon.
So I have a, a question on Franklin.
Mm-hmm.
The, once it's completed, the runoff direction, will it still be toward Downs?
No, sir. So we put a vertical curve in at the top of the street, so we will still have, we'll put curb gutter and, we're not doing sidewalk on Franklin with the substandard street fund, which is supposed to be designed to pay for updating those roads. We didn't have quite enough funding in there to do that, so we did the curb and gutter and the return ramps, and we're, we're leaving it at that, but the design has a vertical curve on the north end, on the west end there, so that way all the runoff that hits Mahan will stay on Mahan and keep going down, pass and head towards the Bowman Channel like it was designed to.
So it's going to be running back toward Mahan now, and then down toward the channel on, on the south end of Mahan?
Correct.
Okay. And that kind of leads to my next question, but I don't think it really pertains directly to tonight, you know, to the material here, but, so on Mahan, we're doing some road repair, but that south end of Mahan.
So on Mahan, all we're doing for this project is we are putting in the curb return ramp and the little bit of curve that ties Franklin into Mahan. One of my next projects that I'm going to go after, I'm going to try to talk with the county and go after a C-MAT grant, is to finish out at least the half width or 10 foot beyond the half width of Mahan, because that's one of the more dangerous roads in town, I feel like. It's narrow, people are constantly driving in the dirt, so that'll be one that I'm going to try to partner with the county and see if we can't get Mahan built out.
I'm really excited to hear you say that. It's kind of where I was leading, but everyone want to bring it up in, you know, tonight's, but, because it seems to me like if that water is running back to the west now, and then down Mahan, that's pretty dirty on that street, too, on the south end because of, of it being unfinished, and is that going to create the same burden that we were having on, you know, with it running off down to Downs off of Franklin, you know, the, the dirt and all the debris?
I think it's going to, you'll still have some of that issue, especially because Mahan doesn't have the curb and gutter finished all the way out.
Right.
But I think it will be 100% better, because Mahan, the inlets and stuff that are designed to take the water into the Bowman Channel are big enough and are designed to handle a flow. So I think with the flow velocities coming down through there, it'll pretty much wash itself and keep itself clean. But I will also say this, if we have to maintain that 110 foot of pipe from the inlet on Mahan to the Bowman Channel, that's a heck of a lot easier than maintaining the 2,600 feet of pipe on Downs, so.
Perfect. And then my, my final question is on the five-year project. That ends on what year?
2025.
2025. And have we begun the next phase?
So we, we did the crack mapping. We're waiting for the final data, and we're actually going to be putting out a, there'll be a GIS link that we can put on our website, so people, as we get our new plan updated, people will be able to go on the website, click on the GIS link, click on their road, and actually see when roadwork is planned for their road for the future. But that'll, that's all going to be part of, once we get all the finished data from IMS for that crack mapping, and we put together our next, probably, it's probably going to be a seven-year plan, once we put all that data together, then all that, that will go out to the public.
Well, that's what the committee on a good job on putting all this together and the work that you got ahead of you, and when it's completed. I kind of like the way the streets were picked, because there's enough main arterials that, you know, no matter which side of town you're living on or driving on, you're going to be kind of bumping over and getting to utilize the benefits of these, you know, more used streets to travel on, so.
100, 100% agree with you. That's why we try to, I know people, some people don't like to hear that, but we feel that, I think that that's in the best interest of the public is to maintain the streets that the majority of the people drive on, and then, not that theirs is less important, but we're, we're going to get to them. We just, we need to make sure that the major roads that everybody drives on are well taken care of.
Very good. Thank you, and good job.
I have three questions I'd like to ask. One, I got a call today asking, how am I going to know when my street's going to be paved? Do we have a timeframe? going to know when my street's going to be paved? Do we have a timeframe? For instance, you listed all of these and there's quite a few. And I know you can't do them all at once. So how are people going to know ahead of time?
So for all of these projects, we have a bid line on them in there that says public outreach and communication. So they have to submit a flyer to us for what they're going to put out to the public to show them that, hey, roadwork's coming, when they have to have stuff off the streets, what their dates are. So I can't give them an exact date yet because until we've awarded the projects, we don't get a, a comprehensive schedule from the contractor. But once we have that comprehensive schedule, that's one of the first things that we will start. We'll start our outreach to the public, hey, roadwork's coming. This is the dates we're anticipating that roadwork to be there. And then we will keep them updated as we go along. And a lot of that goes with like, um, uh, door hangers, things like that. Um, we had some contractors in the past that liked to put things in mailboxes, but that's a federal offense. You can't do that. So we, we, we tell them to stick to the door hangers.
I, I thank you because I, I assumed that there was going to be a lot of, of talking to people ahead of time before you did this. Second question, how much was the rise in the product, the inflation rate or the cost, the increase of the product? And what do you anticipate? Because I know you have a crystal ball you can look into. What do you anticipate for our next paving projects? Is there going to be continued increases? Clearly yes. Do you have any idea how much?
So what we saw on an average of all of our projects was roughly between 15 and 20% increases across the board.
Go back to that one side you had where you had three point, go back with it's one slide?
Yeah. So when we put our budget together, obviously for some of these, like we had 1.5 million for chip seal. It came in at 1.29. Um, that one's less, but the reason why that one's less is because we were doing sewer work on some of the roads that were set to be chip sealed. So I pulled those out of the project this year. And also with anticipation with how much paving work we had going, um, Ron and Shereen and I all sat down and got together and we, we knew we were going to have to pull some streets. So when we saw how Measure V's bid came back and where that number was, we kind of went through and did a comprehensive analysis and said, hey, we're going to have to get these in another year. So, but it's, my guess is with inflation, I think we'll probably, the reason, one of the big things that Ron and I had talked about were, we already did all this work for the engineering, for the legwork and have all this stuff set up. And on any project that we've had that we've delayed or pulled back, every time we've rebid it, the prices have come back higher. So we've always shot, seemed to shot ours, to shoot ourselves in the foot with delaying a project. So and to that extent, that's why we, we said, hey, let's just, we've already done all the legwork and we're ready to go. Let's get this done.
One of the comments that you made in one of the, I don't remember which particular project was that the bids were all pretty close together. And you complimented the companies for understanding what you said. But clearly, I think staff needs to be thanked for being able to make such a comprehensive presentation in the bid process too, so they could come back with so bids so close. There was one that was significantly higher than the others. But for the most part, they did. And so I want to take the opportunity to say to the public and those listening out there that our staff has done a fantastic job to be able to get this all done. I know you have been led the work in all this, but clearly it is important that we understand it's a, a, a joint effort. And I am very proud that you made this presentation of so much money to the companies so they could come back and not have to say, well, this guy bid $5, this guy, this guy bid $200 and this guy bid a dollar. Clearly there's something wrong with the process when that comes back. So I thank you for a job well done.
Right.
Now, can, now, now continue the job well done and get it done.
Yeah, that's right. It's time to, it's time to, to get it done. But no, you're absolutely right. I, I think on all these projects, if you look at how it was bid, other than the one, one bid we got that I felt like they probably had work lined up and they just threw a number at it to see if they could get it, all the bids were, were relatively close in comparison, which said that we did our job. And, um, the Quinn has been great, a great aide to me. He's done, did a lot of legwork on these projects, did a lot of surveying, a lot of querying and analyzing of cores and things like that. And, uh, Will Dan, who'd worked on these three projects specifically, um, did a great job with helping in anything we asked. And anytime we would look at their plan renditions and want to make changes, they were very open to that and made sure that we got a good product for the public. So.
Job well done. Thank you.
Eric, if I could follow up?
Sure.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine.
That was, uh, both Scott and Peggy said something that reminded me. So on Franklin Street, we originally talked in the infrastructure meeting about reusing some asphalt.
Correct.
Is that still in play?
So we actually bid, um, the FY '22 Measure V paving project and Franklin, uh, we had multiple bid schedules. We had one that used that method, which is, um, cold in place central plant recycling, where basically we take the grindings from that, haul them to a site, they make a batch and they pave with it. They all came back significantly higher than the old school mill and fill did. So was not what we were expecting. We were expecting it to see, especially with the volume, the quantity we were doing, for it to be a viable source to maybe save us money. But unfortunately, every bid came back higher. It didn't matter which contractor it was for the, the cold central plant and in place recycling. They were all 15 to 20% higher.
Thanks.
So, and that was kind of why we did it. We did it with a basic bid schedule, a bid schedule B and a bid schedule C or a D, depending on what was in the project. So that way we could choose the low bidder from the basic bid schedule and the CCPR or the basic bid schedule and the mill and fill. So we tried to cover all of our bases to be able to get the, the lowest costs for, uh, the two methods that we thought were acceptable to remediate these streets.
Second, second follow-up question off of Peggy's comments, communication. I know that we see stuff on social media for what streets you're working. Is that other stuff that ends up in the newspaper as well?
Um, I, I believe, Ron, did you send the presentations or do I need to give her a copy of the presentations?
I tried sending it, but, uh, it was too big of a file. So we're going to have to Dropbox it. So I was going to get holdy tomorrow about that.
So, yeah, we're going to do a, uh, we'll get the presentations out to, uh, newspapers. And, um, Ron already brought me into the meetings with our outreach people. So we're going to do a comprehensive outreach so that everybody knows what's coming on social media.
I was more, um, yes, that's great. Uh, I was more talking about the, you know, the, the steady cadence that you're going to reach when you got this amount of money being approved. You know, I, I know that there still is a great portion of the city who looks, reads the newspapers. So, you know, if they're reading it on, on Sunday, they can see, oh, next week the streets, I don't know. Anyways, I just didn't know if that was part of our steady cadence notifying the public as if we're still reaching out with things like this.
With the newspaper?
Mm-hmm.
We can be. If that's what you guys want us to do, we can do it.
I'm certainly not giving you direction. I just wanted to bring up the question. That is not my job to give you direction, Travis.
Yes, we will do that. Thanks.
There you go. The man has spoken.
I have so many funny things I could say, but I'm going to be professional. Mr. Reed, thank you for a fantastic presentation. Let's start with the, the real elephant that everyone needs to hear. This is over six minutes, this is, this is a ton of roads. This is a ton of roads. Anybody out there quoting, listening? Um, there was a joke that was passed around, uh, I think it was around August or September, August maybe of this year. I got quoted as saying, what are you planning to do in, in 2023? And I said, build like hell. Um, if you don't think I was meaning it, this is, this is just one of the many. And we want to talk about what that interruption is going to be. This is all largely on the north end of town. Um, a lot of these streets are on the north side, um, where there's going to be, you know, some substantial work, some, some mill and fill and, and Ward. We've got several arterials here in the conversation. There's a lot of work that's going to get done.
There's a lot of work.
And.
And it's not all in the north end of town. All wild grows, coral.
The bigger mill and fill work feels like it's on the north end, looking at where some of the worn streets are relative to, to how you're, you're planning. It's fantastic. Nothing negative. Um, but that means that, yeah, there's going to be a public interruption. And I just want to remind the public that this is the type of interruption you want to be dealing with.
And I just added it up for you. The, the three projects that you're, yeah, well, the three projects that you're approving tonight add up to 8.15 million.
Oh, okay. And then the last one is?
And then with Ward, Ward Street's another million for paving. So you'll be awarding over $9.1 million worth of paving to happen this coming year.
And, and that, that's, I mean, that's an incredible amount of roads. And some people, you know, I might go and cut it off at the bud and says, well, they just didn't want to do the roads until they got their tax measure passed. No, that's not the case. This takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of effort. And Mr. Reed has been working on putting this package together for several, several months now. We're, uh, excited to have him here and in the, in the public works role and in other roles, doing this work. And we're ready to go because guys, in 2021, there were still people running around. I, I, I mean, I still remember it was September 2021 when the great federal vaccine mandate came out and we went, oh, great, they're continuing this on for another, you know, till thy kingdom come. And now we're in December of 2022 and it looks like hopefully that's over with. You know, it's not official yet, but hopefully. This is just one example of how that COVID cycle has slowed everything down in a way that it was impossible to get things done. We are, but we're now prepared and ready to go. And this is an incredible amount of work that you're going to see in this community. So I can't say enough about the amount of things you're going to see. And your life is going to be interrupted. And we thank you for your patience. And this is what you asked us to do. So a couple other general questions. Um, how many roads are on the shelf? How many roads do we have? The engineering, the readiness, but we shelved it for budgetary purposes. And, and I'm, I'm a general count of, of quantity.
So we have, um, Fairview from Drummond to Felspar. And we have Reeves from Inyo to Mahan. And we have Ward from, um, Norma to Downs that are all shovel, pretty much shovel ready to go.
That are, that are ready to shovel ready.
Those three are ready to rock and roll.
And, and I'm not asking you to give me a, a specific, and there's no chance you could. But what is that in ballpark dollars?
For the engineering or for total cost?
Oh, for if we wanted to take those off the shelf and make them happen. What, what are we talking?
So if you want to take those off the shelf and make those happen, I think you'd be somewhere in the two and a half to $3 million range.
Perfect. Okay. And that's important because I want people to hear and understand that there's a reason these have been picked up and put on the shelf temporarily. There's, you know, the old terminology is that, you know, you can only spend what you have in your budget. That's correct. We, we don't have the extra two and a half or $3 million to make those a priority, but we have the engineering, we have them shovel ready. And more importantly, this means that we can continue to work on grants and other opportunities through that timeframe, correct?
Yes. And one of the things I also wanted to add to you guys is KernCog put out a, um, an update on their webpage today as I was going to log into the KernCog meeting and then realized that we didn't have one, that they were dark, um, for the T-TAC. And they put out a thing today that, did you know that the new average cost for one mile of road is $2 million?
I remember.
Up from my guess of 1.5.
I remember, um, the former mayor, uh, Holloway and I had many conversations where he, he always loved to talk about the million dollar mile of road. And, uh, Chip, that's now half a mile of road.
Correct.
Per million dollars. So, uh, inflating costs and deflating value. There we go. Um, the, uh, I want to talk about Franklin's sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
So there's an amazing amount of carbon gutter in here.
Correct.
Thrilled to see it because one of the things that we have is we have a lot of our streets that have some of these unimproved lots or gaps. And this is something we've talked about on a couple of occasions.
Correct.
Um, I understand your reasoning from a cost perspective, why we can't sidewalk, um, Franklin. And, and I'm not disputing that in any way, shape or form. Um, but the, the good thing about sidewalking is that's something we can come back and, and be able to chunk out more quickly over time, correct?
Absolutely. So once you have the curb and gutter, the curb basically dictates sidewalk and percentages and whatnot. Um, one of the big things that we took into account, well, not only was the cost, it would have blown the budget for this project out of the water and we would have been cutting other roads. So that was kind of why we thought, hmm, let's just do the curb and gutter, get the basics of the road in and done for this, for the, take care of the, the drainage issue we're having. And then obviously if somebody comes and builds on that lot, they would have been required to pave the road out, install the curb and gutter and put the sidewalk in. So we've actually done that developer a favor because the curb's in now. But it just, it, it, one, it didn't make sense because we don't know where they're going to want driveways. So we put the sidewalk in just for them to rip the sidewalk out, cut a driveway in. And from that perspective and, and also from the cost perspective. So that's why we decided not to go. We actually had another $700,000 worth of sidewalk improvements in the Measure V project that I'm not awarding because I wanted, like I said, I wanted to make sure that we had enough money in there. I had enough stuff in there to spend the reserves on what we needed.
On roads.
On roads. And to make sure that, consider that the curb gutter and sidewalk to be part of the road, right?
Yeah.
But I wanted to get the paving and I wanted to get the meat of the road done. And if we still had some extra funds, then I would go in and do. And fix the sidewalk stuff that's heaved and broken and things like that.
Yeah. And it's important for people to understand because what, what's going to happen is there's going to be people that look at Franklin as it reaches completion, they go, what the hell? They didn't want to do the sidewalks. And we're going to go, okay, please go to our YouTube video where we discuss this at length. And this is the reason why is, is there is budget concerns. And doing the curb and gutter, when we're doing the road, ensures that we manage the drainage.
Yep.
That we manage the, the transportation and the, and the, the key element is the paving. Um, I understand, I'd love to have all of it done. And, you know?
So would we?
Hopefully, hopefully, um, our citizens understand the, the continued, understand the importance of Measure V and, and why it's such a critical measure for our roads. And thank you for mentioning, 95% of our roads are being funded by Measure V. That's absolutely critical. So I understand that. I just want to make sure that we've addressed it. There are going to be some roads that, yeah, you're looking and going, where'd the sidewalk go? And.
Yep.
You know?
And that's.
We'll get there. Um, and, and if you want to buy the lot that's empty right beside it and put some sidewalk in, we, we'd love for you to do that. Um, I think that covers all of them. Um, I'm going to have a little bit of fun here because one of the things that I, that I have enjoyed is, is, uh, is hearing from citizens when they have their concerns and when's my road coming and those sort of things. So, um, for Frank Collins, if you're out there, um, one of our, our, our social media commentators who continuously asks, when is Purdue going to get done? When is Purdue going to get done? When is Purdue going to get done? Well, sir, I'm very proud to tell you that Purdue was talked about tonight and it appears that it's going to get done. So thank you very much. And, uh, we'll look forward to seeing.
What section of Purdue?
The, the side that you're talking about. I made sure I was asking.
And I was like, just don't say that, that it's not the right side.
So, uh, um, the bottom line is your lives are going to get interrupted next year. And then when you said, you had a comment, you said at the end of this year, you know, the done, them projects being done. Tell me in your mind what you define as that goal and date for what we're looking at today being completed.
So we're, we're hoping that with all these projects, that we can have them completed by the end of the fiscal year.
So the end of the fiscal, uh, 23 year?
So the end of this fiscal year 23, yes. So by, by July 30th.
June 30th, 2023.
2030, exactly. So with all the work, the, the biggest working day contract we have, which is the Measure V paving is 100 working day project. So, um, with all the work in there, I, with getting the, the concrete portions done and things like that, making sure we're in a good time to pave. Um, I know last year, we didn't have any trouble paving in January and February because it wasn't super, super cold. But obviously we can't, we don't know for sure that that's how this, yeah, we don't know how that's going to be this year. But if, if, as long as that doesn't hinder us, I, I really could see this all being done by, so, January, or June 30th.
So then the, the, the follow-up question would be, what do you anticipate as the start of?
So once we award, we have to go through the submittal process. We go through the contract process. They've got 10 days to get the contract back signed to us. Um, they'll give us a schedule. They'll start giving us submittals on asphalt, concrete, manholes, all that good stuff, framing covers for the lowering and the raising. So I, I would say you could definitely see movement on all three of these. Um, award tonight, 10 days, that's January, I, I, mid-January, I think you definitely see movement on all of them.
Okay. Great.
So.
So when we come back from holiday break, we should be.
Yep.
Starting to see some things, some more, some more to talk about.
Yeah. Ever level already USA'd Ward yesterday. Um, I had a good meeting with Bob about it and we're working through a couple of issues with bypass systems right now, but you, they're going to start seeing dirt flying and big pieces of machinery out there here real soon.
Okay.
So.
Well, again, I think this is a, this is a testament to what we have been saying so much around here, which is it's time to, to not, uh, you know, keep arguing about it, but rather get her done. And so I'm, I'm thrilled to see this happening. Um, I will go ahead and now, um, ask for any public comment on, uh, any one of the three roads items. That would be items number three, four, or five. Um, is there any member of the public with any comment? Is there any member of the public with any comment? Okay. Hearing none. I don't believe there's anybody on the phone either. We'll go ahead and move back to council for any final comments. Are there any final council comments? Okay. Do I have a, a motion to approve discussion item number three, a resolution to accept the base bid as submitted by Bowman Asphalt?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second for item number three. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajarothnum.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Ms. Braden.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Rick, just for clarification, it's, I did not read the full resolution. Is that of any concern?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am. So I can say a resolution and the item number? Okay. Fantastic.
One, one thing I just wanted to point out on that one too, is you did award the additive alternate for high tensile fiber in that road.
So it'll be an even better road.
Yes. So it'll have something to prevent any reflective cracking from the bottom. It's got something to add more tensile strength. So.
So that stop, like what, what's happened on Ridgecrest Boulevard on that?
So Ridgecrest Boulevard did not have high tensile fiber in it. Um, I, I don't believe, I'd have to go back and look at the specs, but what it does is it just adds these little fibers, they're Kevlar fibers.
Sure.
That asphalt's a lot like concrete, very strong in compression, very weak in tension. And anytime you start to get a crack and you've got more surface area for it to deteriorate, we see it deteriorating. So that's an additive to help prevent those cracks. So hopefully we don't have the projected cracking like we see on some of our other roads.
We get a better route. Item number four, discussion item number four is a resolution to accept the basement as submitted by pavement coatings company for, uh, this is the Measure V chip seal project. Do I have a motion for approval of that? Uh, do I have to call for public on each one still?
No, you already did.
Because I already did and I, and I clarified that. I'm good. Okay. Do I have a motion for item number four?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman. Oh, sorry, Mr. Blades.
Aye.
I was looking that way. Mr. Rajarothnum.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Ms. Braden.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
And finally, item number five, this is a resolution to accept the base bid, schedule any D as submitted by Griffith Company, uh, denying the additive alternative schedules B and C and allocating Measure V funds for the basement of the, uh, this is the fiscal year 22 Measure V paving project. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajarothnum.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Ms. Braden.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay. So then we'll come back to item number six. Uh, this is the one I was confusing. This is a, an, a resolution to accept the basement as submitted for allocating wastewater enterprise funds, uh, to construct the phase two sewer project in the amount of 6 million, 6.2 million dollars. Mr. Reed.
So this is our, um, phase two sewer project. It's got point repairs that are partially covered, um, by Cal OES and it's a, our major trunk line on Ridgecrest Boulevard, not Ridgecrest Boulevard, I'm sorry, on China Lake Boulevard from Argus to California and all the way down California to Richmond. So I propose, I made a presentation for you guys for this one as well, so you could see since we're doing so much sewer work too with Ward and with this. Um, on the left, you'll see a, an old brick manhole. This is not one of our manholes, but we do have some that look like this. And on the right, you can see that that's what the coating system, when we do epoxy coating on the inside of them, so they can go from that to that. So the two projects we've got for sewer, you guys already awarded the sewer for Ward. Um, here's some of the major highlights that it used. It's got 430 lineal feet of replacement. It's got four lateral connections that we're reconstructing. We're reconstructing 21 manholes and we're epoxy lining 27 more. Phase two sewer is, but what I just told you, construction in California from Richmond to China Lake Boulevard and also in China Lake Boulevard from California to Argus. So we're removing and replacing over, um, 3,600 lineal feet of pipe. We're slip lining, which is we do a cast in place liner. It's like an epoxy coating like we do for the manholes, 2,200 feet a line. And then removing and replacing and repairing and epoxying 37 sewer manholes. And then after that, we're doing a post installation CCTV inspection so we can see what the inside of the liners and make sure everything is adhered correctly and whatnot. That total project cost is estimated at 7.39 million. Uh, this gives you an idea of the sewer project for what we're doing for Ward Street. Um, so as you can see, it runs from Downs through 178 to, um, just in front of your office over there. Um, we're actually working with Everlevel right now to see about the, the bypass system to repair one of the manholes. The last manhole in that line would require the bypass to go across 178. Um, I would, with, in talking to Caltrans, that would have to be underground and there's probably going to be an existent amount of paving that we're going to have to do for that. So we're trying to come up with an alternative to where they don't have to run their bypass system all the way across the road. So that's one of the things that we're working with them on. Um, this gives you an idea of the comprehensive length of what we're doing for our phase two sewer project, which is the one that we're talking about. So if you look, you can see the teal, that's 15 inch BCP. When we originally did this project, we were thinking we could just do point repairs for a lot of this. Um, the, the first rendition of the plans that I got for that 15 inch section, that's all in the Caltrans right of way, there was like between Argus and Ridgecrest Boulevard, there was like 97 point repairs of three foot segments. And, and any of us that have been involved with point repairs, when you say you're doing a point repair of three feet, it's never always three feet. Usually when you get in, you dig, it ends up being five, seven, nine. So rather than dealing with that on 97 different spots, we felt that the best method would be to just remove and replace it. In doing that, we saw the manholes were in pretty bad shape, so we decided that we should probably just remove and replace those as well, thus getting us to where we have a 50 to a 75 year pipeline that we don't have to touch. So the, as I said before, the paving in Caltrans right of way is extensive with the location of the line. Um, we didn't, the original estimate didn't take into account that the location is about four feet off of gutter line. Well, the pipeline's 18 feet deep, so the tractor that's required to dig 18 feet deep is about 14 feet wide. So that means that the tracks from the excavator are going to be on the sidewalk in the curb and gutter and are going to destroy the sidewalk and curb and gutter. So, and not foreseeing that, the original estimate that happened in 2019 for this project, uh, there were some significant changes that had to go into the plans to make up for those things that we were going to have to do, hence why you can see when we budgeted before we got our nose really deep into the project, we didn't budget near enough for this project. Uh, the purple is our 18 inch. It's got about 2,700 feet of repair in it, of remove and replace. The rest has some point repairs and some slip line, uh, some cast in place liners that go in. We are replacing and repairing almost all the manholes on there and at, at a worse level, we're at least epoxy coating them all. Uh, this is, this is some pictures of Ward showing you sewer and the sewer manhole that we've got. And I've got some more fun pictures to show you as we get on. This is China Lake Boulevard giving you an idea of where we're working for phase two sewer. Um, we're actually getting ready to talk to Caltrans about with how deep this pipeline is and having to put a dump truck next to the excavator to get the dirt off the side of the road. The public is probably going to be very inconvenienced by us having to shut, um, southbound traffic on China Lake Boulevard down from Argus to Ridgecrest Boulevard and detour them around to Balsam. So that's something we're working on with Caltrans that how we think is the best way to do that, but just there's no other way around that I can see us being able to leave a lane open. We're just way too deep and we don't have room to put a dump truck on private property with how close it is to the shoulder. So it's probably going to have to be a shutdown. So there'll be extensive outreach to the public about that and we'll make sure that that's out there, that everybody knows about it. We've, uh, already gone and approached some of the businesses. One of the businesses that we really are going to have to look at taking care of is Burger King. Their drive-through exits onto China Lake Boulevard, so that's the only way. So we're going to have to definitely talk to them and make sure we've got accommodations in place to where they can have their drive-through traffic and probably have to use the alley and run the food out or whatever that it may be. So, but we'll, we'll definitely make sure we're in contact with all them for that. Uh, this is some of the manholes that we have. As you can see, they're pretty deteriorated and cracked and broken. These are the ones that we are remediating and replacing. Here's some other pictures. You can see the deterioration. This one on the far right, that's a, a shot from inside the main line on Ward. So you can see how the, uh, the laterals and stuff that are pushing into the pipe are protruding in. Back in the day, they didn't use to use Y's and didn't use slip couplings to where they would just basically poke the lateral in the pipe and grow out around it. And over time, those move and the, the lateral starts to protrude into the pipe. So this one, the balancing act, obviously we only, uh, for Ward, we budgeted 1.13 million for the sewer portion only. Um, it came in less than that, which was nice. Um, phase two sewer, we budgeted 2.1 million, but that was based on a 15 estimate. We were not far along with the project design by then, but then once we got into it, we knew, we found that there was a lot of it, a lot of things that we needed to change. And especially with that estimate was based off point repairs, not a full removal and replacement. But like I said, anytime you dig in a Caltrans right of way, we've got some extensive paving we have to do to put it back. My thought process was, well, if we're already going to have to repave this and we're going to have to pay to repave it because we have so many point repairs, we might as well make sure we've got a line that we know is going to be good for 50 to 75 years, so we don't have to go back and do this again. So that's the route I took after talking with Ron and Cherie. That's the route we chose to go and hopefully you guys will agree with us. So, and, and even with all the, the updates to this and the changes in the project and the amount that we're going above, um, we still feel that we've got adequate, um, reserve left over for us to complete, still work on the plant, to still do all the things that we've set out to do this year. And again, this is all thanks to the 2013 increase in the sewer rate. That's what gave, gave us the money to be able to do this. And by doing this, we haven't had to bond anything. That, that increase has been substantial to this. And again, we just wanted to thank all the, the people of Ridgecrest for trusting the city staff and council to be able to get this done as well. And that's it. That's all I got for the sewer one.
I'm just going to throw one thing out there that talked about in, uh, the previous council meeting. That was the, uh, the changes that we made at the finance, the finance department did in terms of the investment schedule. And I believe that that accounts for about 1.5 million dollars, 1.4 million dollars a year back to the wastewater fund. So just one decision is going to help, uh, eat about 2.8 million dollars of this cost. Not directly, but going back into the wastewater fund as we get closer and closer to the wastewater treatment plant in 2025 and 2026. These are projects that I, I, I think wastewater treatment plant, I, I, God, I would almost swear I was talking about that in DC in '05 and '06. Peggy, you might even be able to, I mean, it goes back that far at a minimum. And, um, this is, this is the signs that within the next three to four years, we're not only going to have, uh, made huge strides in our longevity in terms of internally on the roads. This is a 50 to 75 year pipe and a massive improvement.
Yep.
But then on top of that, a 60 or 70 million dollar wastewater treatment plant that's going to be able to help us recycle 2,000 acre feet a year back into the, the, the water table as well as, uh, I know that the, the technology and modern advances that that plant's going to bring are going to be.
Significant compared to our.
It's not even funny when you compare it to the age of the, of the existing wastewater treatment. So, uh, again, my thanks immensely to, uh, the public works department. This is something great to be looking forward to. It's going to be another public interruption, people, but it's a public interruption that, uh, is, is due and we're, we're excited to be getting it done. I'm going to go and close that. Those are my only comments. Uh, we'll go ahead and with Mr. Blades. All right, everything?
A couple of questions on this. So we got only one bid, so, which is from Everlevel.
Mm-hmm.
So what is our experience with Everlevel? The amount is huge, 6.2 million. So what is our experience and?
So that was one of the things I actually didn't, didn't get to talk about that I wanted to talk about. One of the things with Everlevel that I am very thankful for is when we had our pre-bid meeting, they were very, very open with all the questions that they had and they allowed us to put out, um, multiple addendums to our plans for concerns that they saw that we could address before the bid date. So that way we could get a comprehensive bid from anybody that was willing to, that was wanting to bid it. Um, so they, they brought up many things to our attention that had been overlooked by all of us on our, our actual design side that were very crucial to us. And when they, we got their bid back, they were, actually called us and said, hey, we're very open to talking to you guys and seeing if there's things that we think we could do to help save your budget since we know that the engineer's estimate was 3.8 and we're at 6.2. So some of those things included being able to shut down roads so they don't have to dig underground bypasses, things like that. So we are, have been actively working with them for ways that we can cut the cost of this down some. One of the things that we're looking at doing is when they're going down California Avenue, rather than having all that bypass piping being underground, we're just going to shut California Avenue down at the ends of the road so it still can be drivable as a through street, but you can't turn onto the side roads for, so like the gold canyons, the silver ridges, all those. So they can run their bypass piping above ground and that will save quite a bit of money because now they're not having to dig a trench, put the bypass pipe underground, pave that trench and then allow traffic to drive on it while they're doing their work. So there's, there's lots of things. So I, I, I will say this, I think I've been very thankful with my time, although I've never done a project with Everlevel. The experience and the knowledge and the expertise that they showed on all of our pre-bid meetings and the questions they asked, um, were very good. They seemed very upfront, open and honest. And every review that we've gotten from any person that had worked with, especially the one that we got from Caltrans with them, from Adam, that said that he would absolutely work with them again, that they were great. It just, that's, you don't normally hear things like that from Caltrans. So there's always some, some hiccup on something like that. So to have a review like that from Caltrans, I think that speaks volumes about them. That's why I think that there were some legitimate concerns and I could understand why the number was higher than it, than we were anticipating. number was higher than it than we were anticipating. And that's why we brought it to you with that caveat you saw in my staff report, how they were already trying to work with us and things like that. So I I have no reserve in awarding this to them. I think that it's, even though we didn't get other bids, I would say just by the pre-bid meeting that I I think the right person got would is going to be getting this job.
Sure. I'm sure you know what you are doing, so thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, talk.
Just one question on, so you had talked about the manhole repairs. And could you elaborate a little bit more on any of the pipe repair?
So this project's got full manhole repairs. So basically, where they are going to set their bypass piping up, they will destroy the existing manhole, destroy the existing base, do a port in place base that forms and shapes to all the pipelines, and then put a new cone and then a new lid and everything on their manhole. And then we're also going to epoxy line them. So basically, where you start to see deterioration from the five to 10 year mark, you start to see the surface of those manholes deteriorate, that coating will help protect them and keep them from deteriorating within that lifespan. So as far as the pipe goes, we are doing full removal and replacement throughout all of China Lake Boulevard.
Okay.
So they're literally going to pull the pipe out, put a new pipe in. We're using vitrified clay pipe. The existing pipe is just clay. So this is a lot, a stouter stronger clay for that. And then there is portions on California that is a full removal and replace. And then there are some portions that have, if we had less than three point repairs in between manholes, we elected to fix the three point repairs and then do what they call a cast and place liner, which basically puts an epoxy coating on the inside of all the pipe. So that's the methods that we have that we're doing. So either the full sections either are going to get lined, or the full section is going to get removed and replaced.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay. I will now go out to any public comment. Is there any public comment in regards to item number six? Not hearing any? Okay, we'll go and bring it back to the council. Any final council comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of resolution to accept the base bid submitted by EverLevel Holdings to allocate wastewater enterprise funds in the amount of 6.294 million and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Full move.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
Mayor Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Ms. Breeden.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Hey Travis? Get her done.
Get her done, that's right. Thank you, guys. Get her done. Beautiful.
Yeah.
I don't think it has to be short and sweet. I think it's beautiful, the fact that we're we're looking at.
Yeah.
I mean, that's an, this is an incredible amount of roadwork, guys. I mean, this is, this is, this is the type of transformative work that we've been waiting to get going, and this is awesome to see. So very proud, very proud to be a part of that. We already did item number seven, so we're on to item number eight. There's a public hearing, a public hearing and resolution approving the fiscal year 2023-24 annual application regarding the CDBG program. Nerissa is not here. I'm guessing you are running this, Mr. Manager.
Yes, I'll be I'll be taking the staff report. As you know, that this year, we have our community development block grant funding. We noticed a public hearing on December 7, 2022 to establish and discuss priorities priorities of the CBDG grant. That our project that staff was looking at was presented to the Quality Life Committee on November 1, 2022. Now, what can we spend the community development block grant funding for? It has to be for eligible programs that benefit low and moderate income persons to aid prevention and elimination of slums and blight and to meet community development needs having particular urgency because of existing conditions posed and immediate threats. Some of those, oh, there we go, I got a staff report here. Some of those eligible projects are recreational improvements, public facility rehabilitation, public facility improvements, water sewer, street drainage improvements, and architectural barriers. Staff has an idea of what to propose, but I'd recommend that the council open up the the public hearing and solicit any sort of ideas that are within this area.
Okay, Rick, just because I'm going to need your your expertise here. I don't have any red lines for the lines for public hearing, so I just want to make sure what I need to do. So I need to first open the public hearing, correct?
Yes, sir, and then take the public comment and close it and then pick a vote.
Okay. And staff report is where in that process?
Excuse me?
After the public hearing is opened?
You can do it during the public hearing.
Okay. I'm just making sure I've got the right sequence here done. I'm sorry, was that Martin?
The idea was to open up the the public hearings so then we could allow.
I want to make sure.
The public and then the, we can also present during that hearing.
Correct. And that's why I just, I had a feeling I didn't get it opened yet, and I'm going, I'm missing my red lines.
I know, I apologize, sir. I left that off.
So I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing. This is to receive input from the community on potential qualifying projects to be considered by the city council for the CDBG grant application, and staff will make a recommendation and staff report, and then we'll call for public comment and and other items. I don't need a motion or anything, let's just.
Right now to open it?
Yeah. No, huh? Okay, we're open, public hearing, okay. Proceed.
Thank you. What staff is recommending is that we use a portion of that, or actually all of that funding, to put shade cover at the upper softball fields at the Leroy Jackson Park. That would be bleachers as well as dugouts. Now, the estimated cost to that project is 165,000. Our allotment is 101,000. And the thought from staff is is that we'd either use impact fee funding for the balance and or other funding that would be identified at the time. We do not anticipate that this project will be before council until FY '24, so we could include it in the FY '24 budget at that point in time and and make the presentation. But this meeting would just be for authorizing myself to sign the application to go to the county for the CBDG project, and then we would address the the funding, the full funding and the budgeting of that project during FY '24.
Fantastic, sir. And this item did come through our Quality of Life Committee, just to, just a few small details. So the field that we're speaking of is the upper softball field at the Leroy Jackson Sports Complex. So if you, I guess they call that the adult field?
Correct. This would complement the work that we're going to be doing to lower softball fields, where we're going to be placing the the bleacher covers and the dugout covers here shortly.
This this continues that ongoing project. That was a previous CDBG project. This is a next, our, you know, next iteration, next fiscal year, and we're going to continue the process of moving up and doing the shade structures at the upper field. And this is just another component to the continuing project list for the Leroy Jackson Sports Complex. As Chief, as the City Manager Strand said, the estimation is that, one thing that we've learned in Quality of Life is that you approve CDBG, but that doesn't mean you're going to see CDBG for a bit. And so this is being tactically put in place because it will allow us to move it along with the other projects that are occurring in a similar timeframe with Clean California and other ones.
Correct. And 165,000 is just an estimate at this point in time. I mean, obviously, when we, when we get approval from the county and HUD to move forward, then we can obviously collect estimates at that point in time and then budget it appropriately.
Okay, so are there any comments from council? And then I will go out to the public.
I have a couple of questions. Is this process like pretty simple? We just apply and get the grant, or is there competition for this money?
No, there is no competition. This is our allotment in the Community Development Block Grant. We actually contract with Kern County to to manage the CBD grant project for us. So this is our allocation, as long as it meets the criteria, which it does. This is a, in a low moderate area. It does, it is one of the projects that is within the four square of the use. And so it's just a matter of us going through the the long process of of working with the county planning department to process this application.
Okay. If I'm correct, I'm just reconciling the, this is the third CDBG that I know I've been involved with. The first one was the softball fields, the lower softball fields, and the second one was the skate park.
Correct.
Structure, correct? Yes. So, but they haven't materialized yet because CDBG takes a Long. A process, and I want to commend those three projects. You've now heard, this is the third. City Manager Strand gave direction to our staff back in 2020, I believe, to allocate the CDBG as an ongoing means of improving our local parks facility. So thank you for that, sir. And then this is the continuation of that. So this is, this is now the third CDBG project that's now lined up with the shade structures being the most, the closest to being realized.
Correct, yeah.
The lower shade structures.
Yeah, Rick has been our point on the CBDG application process for the last three years. And in the past, we'd normally do ADA projects with it or road projects, and we did a project at the Senior Center. And normally in the past, we would aggregate the money over like a three-year period of time and do a larger project. But because this fits so well with Leroy Jackson and these smaller type projects that we have, that we've done annually, even though it creates a little bit more work for staff because you're doing it every year versus once every three years, we are seeing some value in in the improvement of that that sports complex.
And you, and you see something going on more consistently in terms of community improvement. Because by the time we get to next year, we've got one done and one coming, one done, one coming, one done, one coming.
And we do have additional funding that we have, you know, put with the CBDG grant. So it it is a good seed amount of money that we can add a smaller amount and do a larger project.
Agreed.
I think one more thing, Mr. Mayor, in the application, second page, I think we need to change the earthquake dates from third and fourth to fourth and fifth, I think. Am I correct?
You are correct. So did you see that they put July 3 and 4 as the earthquakes?
I will change that.
Yep. July 4th and 5th, you are correct. The third was a quiet day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And man, life's all. If I ever am in a legal argument, I'm calling you.
Well, you can say that Travis, I was going to mention earlier, but Travis actually got all of his staff reports done without an error being found.
I know, the presentation was very nice. I mean, it was in good columns that didn't carry over. It was, it was rather impressive. So who did it for you on the staff?
I have to give it to the staff.
Oh, okay.
But I will say that my staff works to get approval by about 14 different people.
So this is in Nerissa's bucket, so we'll give her a hard time for not remembering the dates. But this is, I mean, again, this is fairly no brainer. Any other council comments?
I just want to say that this is a major improvement that I really like seeing. The adult softball fields have seen a substantial increase in use and having the shade and for the participants and spectators, it's going to be a, it's much, it's a, it's a needed aspect and that it's going to improve things greatly. So I'm glad to see it.
Thanks.
No, thank you.
Okay, is there any, we are in the public comment area. Is there any public comment in regards to CDBG grant funds or other ideas that they want to throw at? But. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council. And we are not approving this, correct? We are just holding the public hearing, correct, Rick?
No, you are approving.
You're approving by authority to sign the application.
Your authority to sign. So do I, do I need to close the public hearing first? So we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing? And then do I have a motion from council to approve City Manager Strand to sign and submit the application?
So more.
Second.
A motion and second? Roll call?
Mayor Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Ms. Breeden.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next is our committee report. Infrastructure appears to have been, oh.
It got canceled, but moved tomorrow, so.
I would say we missed all the slides there. We can show them what the shades were looking like. There's just, there's just a heads up of what we're looking at in terms of shading and this is the area on the upper field, and then if, and we're looking at the similar resilient fabric, wind resistant fabric, I think that's the third one down, type structure, similar to what we're putting in at the Kermagie Ball Fields and and the lower ones as well. Thank you for that. Okay, committee reports. Infrastructure is, it was canceled for November and rescheduled for?
Yeah, it was canceled because of Thanksgiving, but we moved it. We wanted to have one as soon as possible because we know there's a lot of things we talked about. We do not want to give the public the, the view that we are just canceling committee meetings all over the place. We want to keep the steady cadence, so we'll have it tomorrow, and I have a bunch of things to talk about, so.
So tomorrow on 12/8. Okay. City Org was canceled for January. The biggest thing that would have came out of City Org is the reminder that we have our second Trash Town Hall next Tuesday evening. Is that correct?
Yep, December 13th at 18:30.
Yep, December 13th, 18:30, 6:30 PM here at the city council chambers. We welcome anyone who has questions. If we can provide some more clarity, we'll have representatives from Waste Management from Kern County, hopefully, and then, of course, our city staff here. I want to thank the community that's beginning to respond positively and understanding that this is not something that we, quote unquote, you know, are driving in terms of an agenda, but was a state-driven agenda that we are obligated to comply with and implement. I have said that there are two key words. Always understand that they have different definitions. The first is the word implement, and the second is enforcement. Those are different words, and they have different meanings. We are in the process of the implementation right now, and our hope is that our citizenship and our community understands that we need to implement this, and then will work with us through the implementation into any future needs for enforcement. And we look forward to seeing you there. There is nothing else that the City Org meeting needed to cover at this time.
For City Org, I got something for you.
Sure.
Well, I guess I should pose a larger question to you. Do we want to use this area or the future agenda items area? If we have something that I think would be deflected to another committee, should we bring it up here? Or wait, do we get to future agenda?
I think we usually do it in future agenda items so that we can do the committee reports and the future agenda items would be anything that you want for.
Just kick it off to the committees at that point.
Yep.
Roger.
And then the next committee report is the Parks, Recreation, and Quality of Life Committee, which met last, met yesterday. And I'll go ahead and, you want to, I'll let you go ahead and run this one first. I've been talking enough.
Well, so we had a handful of public that showed up, and our initial discussion was about the pool. And so that was pretty exciting because in the past, we've talked about the pool, but we've never been in a position that we could actually start really discussing it and making it a reality. So there was some good discussion about a pool from the public as in regards, everybody's bringing in ideas on size and, you know, and so we basically.
Diving board.
Diving board and wind shelters and trees. And so it's just kind of a brief initial, you know, talk. And so I believe the consensus was that, you know, as we move along, there will be more time for public comment and for input from the community, and we'll have input from finance, we'll have input from, you know, the council and be able to start kind of formulating a plan. And so I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add about the pool?
It was nothing but a pleasure to discuss.
Exactly. The flooring is down in the Kermagie Center. They're just finishing up on a few fine finishing touches to it. I got to go in and see it. I think probably most of the council has probably seen it, but it looks fantastic. And so they're working on the partitions. We discussed shade structures at the dugouts of the lower softball fields, and that's currently being in in progress. I think Will Dan's working on some of the final planning of it. We just discussed the, tonight, the shades for the upper softball fields. So and teen night, there on December 16 at 5:00 PM, there will be another teen night. The last one was a big success, and so spread the word that the next teen night will be on December 16 at 5:00 PM. And that's pretty much all that I have, and if you want to add.
I just have a couple of small, quick ads. Probably get myself in trouble with this one, Martin, so be careful with me.
He loves hearing that.
I want them ready. You know, no, again, it was a great meeting. It was a pleasure to talk about the pool. Thank you to the Williams who came in and were talking about pool temperatures, which I never would have even had a conceptual concept about, that they swimmers want it colder and the seniors want it warmer, and how do we balance that out? There was a, certainly something I hadn't considered on the, on the pools where they have an adjoining, you know, whether they manage one temperature across the entire area. It was very interesting, oh, didn't really thought about that one. And it was a great conversation. Lots of good things coming out of, again, I think the shade structures, some of the other things that we're trying to move those towards the end of '23, when we think we'll be kicking off some of the Clean California side projects for for Leroy Jackson. So there's, there's a lot coming to Leroy Jackson. It's starting to sound a lot like we're going to see a lot of roads the first half of the year and a lot of parks the second half of the year. That's kind of, kind of what it sounded like. I wanted to acknowledge that the floors are one of the art projects, and we're excited to see that done as well as the partition. They're going to throw some paint on there as well as the Wi-Fi infrastructure. And and by the time we get into the, I think, July 1 of 2023, the Kermagie banquet facilities are going to look and look, feel and be substantially improved. They will have done carpeting, flooring, painting, Wi-Fi. They have really, we will have made that Kermagie Center, once again, a great centerpiece for our community, for holding community events and for showcasing all of Ridgecrest, and I thank our team for that. They have so many projects on their plate that it's, that it's almost crazy. And then a local businessman at the meeting decided to throw another crazy idea at it, and 24 hours later, they're already ordered. They're already incoming, and we're going to put a little arcade, hopefully, in the Kermagie Center for our local youth, just as something, there's nothing to do for our kids inside the Kermagie Center if they're there, you know, either as a cooling center during the summer or waiting for a bus pickup or waiting for a parent pickup. And so we're going to do a little bit of work to provide some free arcade in there. And we'll see how it works out, who knows? But the idea is that it's something that we can then use in teen nights and we can use at other events. And and the brilliant idea that I didn't hear until the next day was, and if you happen to be at one of like the China Lake Museum Dinner or any one of those wonderful events, and you happen to bring your children and they happen to be 11 years old and they don't want to sit there for much longer, listening to an auction, you send them out and they play video games. Sounds fantastic to me. And I hope I didn't get myself in any trouble by just saying a local businessman. But we're excited about that. I think that was all from.
Yeah, no, I'd like to add too, that the tree lighting was, we talked about that a Yeah, no, I'd like to add too that the tree lighting was a, we talked about that a little bit. And that was a, I think, a huge success. Any of us that were there that night, there was a lot of, a lot of, the community showed up, the tree looked fantastic. And so there was a little bit of discussion as to, I think somebody led on that there's power available on the top of the eaves around the building. So we may be able to expand on lighting and, and put on even a little more decorative effect. And then maybe expanding some of the activities for the community and the kids at next year. So we look forward to having a even bigger and better tree lighting ceremony next year. So.
And I know that the, you know, in meeting with, we had a conversation with the base here just this week too, about their winter Wonderland event. And how can we kind of not end up being on the same date with each other in the future? And there's, there's good communication there. But we had a great event and thank you to the citizens who came out. Yeah, I had a blast. Okay. Any other questions for quality of life? Nope. Okay. Other committees, boards or commissions? Anything? I'm going to go from Kyle. I don't see anything. Solomon?
No.
Doc?
Are we on a?
Other committees, boards or commissions? And Peggy? Nope. Okay. City manager report?
Yes, sir. We are going to be, I talked to Sheree today. We are going to be moving the finance committee meeting. She's been out this week.
Did he move it for next week?
Yeah, she's going to, she's going to reach out to you guys and come up with a date. We'll re, we'll re-advertise it. We want to be able to bring that proposed measure P budget to you guys and get your look at it, input on it prior to bringing it to council on January 18th. I'm also looking at sometime back, back in November, council mentioned wanting to do a workshop. So I was looking at maybe the end of January, beginning of February, just to get council together, not in chambers, maybe over at the Kermit G. You know, obviously agendize it. So I'll have Ricka reach out to you guys and we'll come up with a, maybe a time and a date that we can schedule that. And there'll be no, no decisions we made that day. It'll just be a workshop to talk about the status of the city. We can have the department heads there and we can just have a open discussion. Because I know there was some concern that, that because of the format of the council meeting and, and all the committees, there's never really a time for council to sit together and just have an open discussion about where we're at in the city and ideas of where we're going to go. So I'll have her reach out to you guys, see if we can come up with a date. We can either do late afternoon or, or evening. I'll leave it up to you guys. So you should be getting a call from Ricka here after a bit. We are looking at, we had our first meeting today on a event that city wants to sponsor on Balsam Street sometime in February. We're looking at like evening on Balsam Street. We had Chamber of Commerce representative with RACBB as well as a couple of local business people that attended that meeting. And we're looking at trying to get that event going in February. So try to make it basic. We've reached out to some of the wineries in Tehachapi, Flightline, as well as some of our local food vendors to see if we can do an event. See if we can get the, the public out and have an evening where we can get people together. And I believe that is, that is all I have this evening.
Next is our future agenda items. Mr. Blades?
Yeah, I'd imagine this would send over to future. My gosh, that is an off night to city org. It's something that's come up before, but I drove by this weekend and it became another issue I wanted to talk about. And that is the cardboard drop off recycling thing. And here's, here's the problem. I don't place a blame anywhere specifically. I'm not going to offer a solution, even though in my mind I have a few. Just that it is an issue. People need to recycle cardboard. I know it gets picked up and moved and then people go and drop trash there. It's infuriating for me to see, but without just.
We, we do have a solution for that. The dumpsters are going to be moved to County Line Road here in January. And so
Like actually out to the facility?
Correct. That we'll be able to put a banner up at our.
That's what I was going to say. I love it.
Public Works facility that says that the dumpsters have been moved. And so we're going to move them out there so they have a better look at them. And so when they get full, they can empty them quicker.
Love it.
The difference with that one is going to be, they'll, my understanding is they're going to be in the waste management yard. So it'll be open only during the hours there open. So it won't be evening, weekend type drop off like it is over there. So there will be a little bit.
That's not my understanding.
It's not? Okay, that's what I was told. So.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay. That's news to me then. Because I, that's what I had originally heard from Josh back ways. So.
That's news to me.
Okay.
So we'll get an answer for that one.
Sounds like our staff's going to have a conversation.
Well, it sounds like they're all over it. That's great. It's been an issue for a long time. I've brought it up over the last couple of years. I've brought it up multiple times. I know that we've been trying to come up with something. I'm glad. It's just coming to a head. I was going to kick it to your city org, but sounds like it's already handled. I don't have to say anything. Great. And the rest of the, the rest of the issues I have are all for committees that I am on. So I will handle them there.
Solomon?
None.
I have none. Scott?
Comments?
Future agenda items. Peggy?
No.
Okay. Mayor and council comments? I will, we'll go ahead and kick off with Kyle. Anything that you have to wrap up this?
Just a few things that I missed during the announcements. That is the Christmas Parade, 53rd Annual Christmas Parade at 9:00 AM this weekend on Saturday. The, of course, the Trash Town Hall. We've talked about that a few times, December 13th at 18:30. You know, I prepared very long. This can wait until the next meeting we have. But I'll just end with Skip. It'll be a pleasure to work with you in the future. And Peggy, it'll be, you'll be sorely missed. But we'll talk about that next meeting. We'll, we'll start the Peggy, the Peggy parade next meeting. I agree. Yeah, well, I wrote, I wrote a lot down. Peggy's had a huge impact, not just on this community, not just on the city council itself, but on me as well. So I think those are all things worth mentioning.
Solomon?
No.
Doc?
I want to talk about Peggy. I'll keep it brief. But I just want to say it's been an honor to, to work side by side with you these four years from the very beginning from, you know, you're a person that handles and takes on the tough decisions. And, you know, thinking back, you know, some of this, I just jotted down a few notes here. I don't, I don't have a, you know, planned talk here. But, you know, everything from water to the casino, to earthquakes, to COVID. It's just been great to work with you. You're, you're such a strong pillar of this community and I don't expect you to just disappear. But the one thing that I really will always stick with me of working with you on was the employee compensation. I just will never forget us sitting, sitting in there and, in front of all the, the employees and the union reps and, and discussing the, you know, lack of, you know, a employee.
It was a team effort.
It was. But we committed to it and you committed to it. You sat there and said to these folks that you were going to not drop this ball. And I agreed 100% with you. And we worked really hard and not to say, I mean, the whole council worked as a team. But I just want to say that's one thing that I will always keep, you know, in my memory of, of us working hard, you know, for that. But anyway, so, and we'll talk more. But anyway, thank you for being there and all the work that you've done for this city. So.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I have a few comments, so bear with me as I go through this. Since 1983, I have been involved in water. It was one of the big things when I first came here and realized that, that this was a desert. Like surprise, but thinking that we're pumping water like it's an unending supply and it isn't. And the fact that since 1983, there's been huge, huge accomplishments that people have degraded sometimes. Not understanding, not fully caring, only wanting to say no. And others who've said, you know what, we've got a lot done and we have a lot more to do. And I did not want to give up my committee assignment on, on our water. But you know what? And I even begged Scott to not take it. But you know what? It was the right thing to do because the right man is there now, has been, understands and is doing a fantastic job, not necessarily fighting openly, but questioning strongly. Is this the way we should be going? And I am very, very proud of what you've done and what you've accomplished and where we're going to go in the future on that. Couple of other things that are very important to me, important to me is in December 3rd of last year, I died on the operating table, bled out. I saw what the doctors were doing to me from above. I knew that something had changed in my life that I couldn't figure out what I saw had. And I don't want to go into it in great detail because so many of you have already heard it. But I knew there was a reason for that to happen. And when I kept questioning, am I supposed to go for, it was a, a white area. I can't describe it except it wasn't wet. It wasn't cloudy. It wasn't cottony. It was just wet. And I said, what am I supposed to do? And I looked around and there wasn't anybody there to tell me what I was supposed to do because I was looking down on this body. And as I looked down, I could hear the doctors yelling code blue, code blue, code red, then bled out. I heard the word bled out. And when that happened, I heard another doctor, which seemed like a very long time, but I do not believe it was, said, I got her, I got her. And immediately I was back in my body. And what that means to me is that God wasn't ready for me yet. I still have work to do here. And my eight years of working in this city and six more before that, working on various committees, both whether it be the Water District, the Airport District, anywhere in this community where I've served and been elected to serve, I knew that this is a community that matters, that cares and does. And we plan ahead. So I'm going to talk about a couple of things I'd like us to plan ahead and look for, both as a council and as a community. I think that it is important that we understand that things don't just happen. Things don't just come on us by surprise. Ooh, we didn't know about that. We do know about it. We do know that there's growth heading down South China Lake Boulevard. And shortly, I would say within the next 15 years, we're going to see development along the highway. If we don't participate in that development, understand the impact of that economic growth, if it takes away from the city because the people that are traveling the freeway are not going to come see us, they're not going to come off 395, they're going to do what they purchase and buy what they got at that time there. We need to look at annexing that property so we can get down to 395. Mick Leeson and I talked about this probably eight, nine years ago. And we talked about how we deal with the other side of 395. How are we, how are we going to do that? And we had an idea at the time and went to Kern Cog and said, okay, well, it's the city and the county, we're closely together to do this because it's going to happen. And if it happens without our input, without what we can do, we're short sighted, we're foolish, we're throwing money away. And so Ron and since, and since then, Ron and I have been working on it. And after that, Ron and all this council have been working on the annexation process. There's been problems. The casino was a huge implement to that, implement. It was a huge impediment. It was, maybe it was an implement, who knows? But it was an impediment to that. And when we look at how we deal with what's going to happen in the future, if we don't start planning now and understanding, when I was on the Water District Board, I talked to them, how are we going to get water down to 395? How are we going to get sewer and trash, trash is not that difficult, get sewer and services down to 395, electricity? We wanted to start planning now and we must start planning for it now. I think it's, it's indicative of what's happening in the Walmart Center. More and more and more people are growing, coming, businesses coming in and it's going to happen there. Let's get started on it now. I don't think we can ignore it. One of the things I did, my second and probably last semi-direction to the council is marijuana. I voted strongly against it when we talked about how we were going to do, whether we would legalize it inside the city limits. I still believe that it is not the best thing for us to do. But I do think by ignoring what's happening, we are closing our eyes. We're living with blinders. It's all around us. It can be delivered anywhere. It, it happens. I've talked to people, young people I know, older people I know. And if we don't get a handle on where marijuana is, we are going to ignore the reality. Now, we understand that many of our employees inside this community, including the federal government employees, the hospital, can be terminated if they're or face disciplinary, disciplinary actions if they are using, caught using marijuana. But the fact remains that I know the government is going, the federal government is making changes. We've heard, we've heard our president talk about that. We've heard legislators discuss changing those, those rules. And if we don't understand what the implication of that is for this community, I think we're wrong. I urge the council to look at how we deal with it, how we accept it. Do we, do we want to continue to say we've got a fence around the city of Ridgecrest? Because we don't. It's here. It is, it is anywhere and easy to obtain. I think it's important that the council puts its stamp on it and say, are we going to open it up to a vote of the people? Are we going to open up to an advisory vote of the people? Are we going to discuss it? Are we going to ignore it? Ignoring it is wrong. Understand the implications for our community. Do I propose that we open up this community to every drug there is in the world? Most of them are here anyhow. Legally? No. Illegally? Yes. And how we deal with that is going to be a, a conversation with the police department, with the community, with our staff and how we accomplish that. I urge the council to look at that problem, look at the issue, look at the benefits and look at what the detriments, what the problems we, we may face because of that. The last thing I'd like to say is I am so proud of our staff. I've watched people grow into their jobs. I've watched people help me understand what I already knew I knew and found out I didn't know as much as I thought I did. But you know what? I also think we've learned together. I think I have taught them some things. I think that we, understanding each other is the most important thing we can do. And when you come into this job, any job, thinking you know the answers, you are dead wrong. You may know the questions, but you definitely do not know all the answers. And so they, that comes from talking to the public, talking to each other and talking to staff. We have an incredible staff. I'm glad, sir, that you did not leave us. I told you if you did, I was going to kick your ASS. But you didn't and I'm glad I didn't have to kick your ASS. But I'm, I'm so proud of how some of our staff, I look at Sheree who came in here and I thought, wow, she's, she knows what she's doing. And she taught us all so much. Look at Nerissa who came in and said, I just want to work. I just want to do. I don't need. need a title. But you know what? That woman has done an amazing job. I am so pleased with what's happening in our community because of our staff's efforts. If I've left one of our staff out, who I think hasn't been named, shame on me. But I'm going to say that every one of them are amazing. I am proud to have worked with them. And lastly, I'm proud to work with you, council. You have taught me so much. Kyle, when you came in, I didn't think you were the right man. In fact, I was positive you weren't the right man. But you know what? You have grown. You have shown me that first impressions don't matter. If they form a basis of action, shame on all of us, including me. I have learned so much from you. You have asked questions, and sometimes I get so impatient with your questions, and I know we all do. And I know that you are asking them, not because you sometimes don't know the answers, but you're asking them for people who have asked you, and you want to be able to give them a more full answer. What more could you ask of a councilperson than to say, I have a question, I want an answer? If we don't give that back to the public, again, we are not doing our job. Numbers don't matter. That's what people say all the time. Numbers are just numbers. They move around. There isn't anybody, anybody in this whole entire council who has a stronger fix on numbers. He makes... We constantly are corrected by Solomon, who has read just what we all have gotten and found a mistake. He can find the smallest or the largest mistake because he's knowledgeable, he knows what he's doing, he listens, he understands, and he doesn't keep quiet. He seems silent sometimes. It's up here, and it comes out here. That knowledge you have, I am so grateful for you sharing it. You. Scott? I have learned more from Scott than I ever thought I possibly could. I knew he was the wrong person, the very wrong person, because he came in with an alliance of two other council members I did not agree with. To say it kind of kindly, because I did not agree with what they did or proposed most of the time. Sometimes I agreed with them, but most of the time I didn't. But Scott read, looked, heard, understood, asked questions, and changed his position openly. Consequently, we all learned that there is more than just simply this. It is not only just no, but it used to be hell no. Now, we find yes. How can we do it? How can we make us better? How can we be better? I think that you have shown me the diligence and the creativity to find solutions in very difficult water problems. And again, you serving, or I knew was the wrong place, the wrong time. I owe you the biggest apology I can ever give you. And I think your wife are still speaking to me after I said, no, Scott, you're wrong. I was wrong. I learned. And I understand that there are other people who may be coming into council, who are running for council, who whatever thought, you are wrong. Listen, learn, and understand that there aren't only just one answer. You, Eric.
Okay, we're adjourned.
When you came to town, I thought, who is this arrogant young man who is trying to tell us how to do? I happened to serve on the credit union board at that time, supervisory committee, and I thought, who does he think he is, coming in to tell us what to do? Brand new, young, and knew everything. Well, he didn't know everything, but he knew a heck of a lot. Look how the credit union grew under your leadership, under your constant prodding, under your innovative methods. Now, let me bring it to city council. When he told me he was going to come to city council and run, because I had begged him to run, I knew I was sick, I had begged him to run because I could not do it. And he said, no, my wife won't let me, I've talked to my family, I can't do it. And I said, okay, I guess I'm going to run again, and I'm going to do the best job I can. Because I've gone through two cancers, three heart surgeries, and you know what? The Lord again said, this is the man. He came to me when I had already decided, that very day, I was going to go ahead and sign up to run again as mayor. And he called me and said, I'm going to run. And I said, okay, okay. And he's done an innovative job. He has been arrogant at times. He's been wise at times. He's been a counsel to many people if you will get past of, you think he's too young. At 76 years old, everybody is too young. But you learn from the youth, you learn from all of us. And Eric, I have learned a lot from you. I am proud of the fact that you constantly are looking for ways to make us all better, ways to grow, way to solve solutions, way to find dollars, and you're generous beyond all means. And so I thank you. Last, this man sitting here, just a police chief, just a police chief. And I can remember when Dennis resigned, Dennis Spear resigned as city manager, I had some issues with Dennis because I didn't feel like he was doing the job he could do and told him so. A couple of other council members did too. And I said, how can we help you? What can we do to make you better? And Dennis resigned for his reasons. And so we looked around. Council interviewed a number of people to try to take Dennis's job as city manager. This man stood up. We talked to him. But you're just a police chief. You are just. And when you box people in and say, this is what you know they are, and you don't look at what they can become, you have become a good city manager, an example to all of us, an example to your peers. I recall talking in the city of Tehachapi with some people at Kern Cog meetings. Wow. They knew him even better than I did at that time, and I worked with him for years because they quickly saw what he had to give. And I am proud of that. I'm proud that others who didn't work with him as closely as we all did, saw that and said, he's growing, he's amazing, and he has great ideas, and he has good contacts, and he uses them. He knows how to make people see what he's thinking without overpowering them and telling them, this is what you will think. Because you listen to him and you learn from him. And so I'm grateful for that. Thank you. The last one, Jed. Jed has been there when I was, when I... At the earthquakes, Ron was out of town. Mick Gleason and I were sitting in your office. This was after the first earthquake, but before the second, we were sitting in your conference room. And we had the second earthquake. We couldn't stand up. We couldn't figure out what to do. I couldn't walk. And Jed grabbed me, dragged me out of his office, and went to work. And Mick and I looked at... And those of you who don't know who Mick Gleason was, he was our Kern County Supervisor. Mick and I looked at each other and said, what do we do? All the county people had left, all the state people had left. We were fine. We didn't have that much damage from the first earthquake. There was nobody here but Jed and a few people that were still out at the Desert Empire Fairgrounds. But most everybody had gone. And Jed immediately mobilized the entire staff of the city, had got the fire department. The next day, Kevin McCarthy was here. We have an amazing man who filled Ron's space while he wasn't here. And as you all remember, it was 4th of July weekend, and Jed was here. Jed, we couldn't have gone through those first few days without you, and we could not have ever recovered as well as we did without you and your staff and all the people who made things so much better for all of us. And I am so very thankful for you because we wouldn't have what we have now. So with that, my final comment is to Skip Gorman. Skip, you have a huge job in front of you. You have a golden opportunity. Listen, learn, understand, make comments, don't be afraid to make mistakes. You will. We all do. More importantly, though, understand that you can grow. And if the mistakes are a mistake, acknowledge it, say, you know what? I was wrong in this. I am going to do this. I understand. If you strongly believe in what you believe in, fight for it, but listen to others because you don't know it all. You never will. That doesn't take anything away from your innate knowledge and who you are because I can remember back in 1983, when I came here, you were out at, in your Kern Airport, flying out, and every Monday, you'd come in and I'd go, bye, Skip, thank you. Meanwhile, after hearing wonderful stories from you before the airplane left. But you know this community. People have elected you to serve them, and I ask you to serve the entire community. Remember that all of the people that voted for you, there were others who didn't vote for you. You represent them too. And I know you know that because you're a good man at heart. And I believe you have a golden opportunity to be the fifth member of an amazing council who believes in this community and understands that there is nothing better than people working together, growing together, and serving together, and listening and understanding the mission. And I thank you for your ability to serve. I thank you even more for standing up because I know you've thought about it in the past, and you said, now's the time. I wish you Godspeed and know you're going to do well. And with that, I have no more public comment. Thank you.